At this time, I'll call our meeting to order. I'd like to thank everyone that is here this evening. I would also like to let you know that Dr. McCray, our Mayor Pro Tem, is at UNC Chapel Hill in a leadership class this week. So she will be watching us by way of YouTube, and if need be, we can call her, but she is in class up there, and it was an honor for her to get to go and represent Hope Mills. So she'll come back with some new and innovative ways of improving our leadership here. We also have with us tonight Pastor Michael Mathis from Mission Field Ministries to lead us in our invocation. I'll invite him to the microphone at this time. If everyone will, please rise.
Almighty God of the universe, it is you that we call upon this evening. And as we call upon you, we first give you thanks for your marvelous works upon all of humanity and all that you continue to do. Thank you for the security of America, especially for Hope Mills and Cumberland County. We thank you for your guardian angels and how you shield and protect us. There are so many things that we could thank you for this evening. Lord, and I especially thank you for helping me to get here on time. It was quite a day for me, Lord, and as a team player, I like being punctual. So thank you, God. We're always so very grateful for your long suffering and patience with all of us, God, as we try to do the right things in these troubling times that we live in, especially as leaders. We thank you for your patience, and we continue, God, to recognize how frail we are and our great need for you, Lord. And simply put, Lord, to call upon you for help, we first recognize who you are, and we ask you, wherever there's anything would be a hindrance to us hearing your voice this evening, Lord, we ask that you would remove it from us, oh Lord. And simply put, we repent of anything, God, that would hinder your movement here, and for you dispelling or dispensing your wisdom to the leaders this evening. We thank you. We thank you for all of our leadership, Mayor Jackie Warner and her family, the entire council, the entire board, and everybody, God, that contribute to helping the town of Hope Mills to become a better place and a happier place to live in, and a secure and safe place to live in. We thank you for them and the decisions that they so wisely make as they govern this town. We're especially grateful, God, for the guardian angels. I call them, or we call them our first responders, law enforcement, the firemen, and everyone else. Oh, God, you are marvelous in the ways, God, that sometimes we don't even see you. We thank you. Tonight, we have an agenda, as always. You tell us to make plans, but allow you to lead our footsteps and now help us, oh Lord, to receive your wisdom, help the board to receive your wisdom as they represent the people, to make the right and good decisions for this town. We thank you now for all that you are doing as you build Hope Mills into a great and happy place to live in. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. At this time, I'd like to recognize Jerel D. McGeechee Jr. and Thaden Johnson. These two young men are starting a trend that we're going to do for a while, and that is to have some of our elementary students come and do our pledge of allegiance. We have used Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts before, but now we're going to go down and go a little bit younger and get them started and learn a little bit more about government. So I'll turn it over to you to lead us in our pledge.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you doing that. And we'll make sure that both of you get a certificate so that we can also let that be what we start with too, so you'll remember this night. But thank you both for being here. Next, we have approval of our agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
Make a motion to approve. The agenda is written.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Our agenda this evening is a little bit different than normal in that we normally have official comments at the end of the agenda, and what we were realizing and what the board was realizing was that most often, if we did have something important to tell people, they were gone if we did have people come. So we will take that opportunity at the beginning. I would first like to tell you that this has been a good week for Hope Mills. Two important things happened, and one is that, and many of you may know, but if you don't, we had a grant to do the sidewalk on Rockfish Road. It was going to go from Goffview all the way down to Johnson or maybe to Maine, and we got this grant back in 2013. And over time, for whatever reason, we were not able to spend the money. We did get, finally get it, the money was, we got a bid for doing the work, and then DOT caught up with us. And they said, you don't need to spend that grant on Rockfish Road because we're going to do Rockfish Road when we widen Rockfish Road. So I guess waiting that eight years was a good thing. But this, this week, FAMPA, and that's where they make decisions for our region, for Cumberland County and Harney and Sampson County, but what the decision was made was, we asked if we could reuse or realot that money, and they agreed, and they voted unanimously to allow us to move that money down to the lake. And we had put in our capital improvement plan, a sidewalk at the lake, and also making it ADA compliant, and also pedestrian crosswalks. So they have allowed that money to be moved down there, and that comes off of our capital outlay budget, which means for us, we have to have a 20% match, but 20% is a whole lot less than 100% of the total cost. They also, we had, we got a grant for Johnson Street, and we found that when we got to the railroad tracks, that that was going to be a little bit complicated. And it was even more complicated when CSX gave us a bill for what they were going to charge us to fix it so that we could have safe pedestrian crossing across the railroad tracks. So the town went back to FAMPA and DOT and asked, can we increase the amount of money that we've received for Johnson Street? And they did increase the amount of money to $121,084 to cover the additional charges from CSX. Those are two things that are really important for us because part of our sidewalk plan for Hope Mills would be sidewalks along our main corridors, and this takes care of two big projects. But not to let them disappoint us, they also put in the amendments for this year's STIP, which is the plan for roads, and they're going to let this probably by 2022, but they're going to also replace the existing sidewalk and construct new sidewalk along North Carolina 59. So that gives us another piece of our plan, and of course, 20% is something the town will have to pay, but like always, if you look at how much the capital improvement plan would be if we had to fund it ourselves, that's a small amount of money. The other thing that I, as my official comments, would be, we do have the Mayor's Coalition meeting this coming up Friday, and the Mayor's Coalition this time is going to be looking at and talking about the Mid-Carolina Council of Governments new location, but they're also looking at ways that we could spend the American Rescue Plan funds. And that's another thing. We've had one big community meeting, but we'll probably have to have another one because a lot of Hope Mills residents didn't go to Grace Creek. One last thing is, we do have a team that has probably just started. We have a softball team, 12 and under, that's in Louisiana, Alexandria, Louisiana, and they are undefeated, and they're playing again. They've been down there a whole week. They're playing tonight at 7:00. They're playing South Carolina, which they've already beat one time, and then what they'll do is, then they'll have a game tomorrow, and maybe we'll come home with a World Series champion. But we do need to keep them in our thoughts and prayers because they're playing right now while we're playing, while we're meeting. At this time, I'll turn it over to any other of our board members that would have an official comment. I'll start with Commissioner Legg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We're getting almost back to normal, but maybe we done it too soon. I'm not sure. But I would like to come back better than normal, better than we were when we, when we got the COVID alert last year. I'm also very proud of the softball teams that are participating in the World Series. We haven't had a World Series champion in a few years. So hopefully, after this week, we'll have another one. So good luck to those girls. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner Marley?
I don't have a whole lot. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It's good to speak to a room full of people. I will say one thing. This past Saturday, the Prime Movers held an event at the golf course. All the board attended it, and I know I had a good time there. I think it was a good turnout. I wish there had been, you know, triple what was there, but it's, the Prime Movers is doing good things in Hope Mills. And if any of the citizens here, the Prime Movers holding an event, you need to go to it. Thank you, Madam.
Commissioner Edwards?
Well, I'm not going to sound like a broken record, but I agree with the first two, but I would like to thank all of you for coming out today. It's nice to sit up here and actually see people here, still here, before we have to leave. I just want you all to recognize that Hope Mills has a fantastic staff and town manager and town clerk, and I just wish that you can all have a chance to see what they're doing and the wonderful accomplishments they make for the town. And we appreciate them so much, and we, I think we have the best staff and service department of the whole United States, really. And I'm real proud of them, and I hope you are too. Thank you.
Commissioner Bell Flowers?
I too like to thank everybody for coming tonight. And yes, it is kind of different when we, when we see a room full of people at the very beginning. And like Commissioner Legg said, you know, as, as we, as most of us have been watching the Olympics in Tokyo and Team USA going for gold, right now at 7:15, we've got a Team Hope Mills that's in Louisiana. They're going for their gold, and they're in the winner's bracket. And they've got, and they're undefeated in their bracket. They're doing the same thing. So that is a huge accomplishment, and hopefully, they'll be able to bring home the trophies that they were looking for for an outstanding season. The event on Saturday was well attended. Even though it was hot, even though it was hot, it was still a well-attended event, and the Prime Movers were behind that, along with all the town staff. The only recommendation I had, and I wanted to share it with several comrades here from VFW, is that I think maybe and we'll do it again in the first Saturday in October, the Prime Movers partner up with the VFW and do the same thing down at the golf course. And it'll be a little cooler, and I think probably have a little bit more of attendance that will come out. So just an idea for, to consider, looking in October, doing another event just like we did on this past Saturday. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Also, one final thing, and that is, this Saturday is Suicide Awareness Swim at Hope Mills Lake, and this is something that we've partnered with the group, and they, they will be swimming 2.2 miles on our lake, and they've got relay teams. They've got one lady, Stephanie, that will actually be swimming 22 miles because she'll be going to Lake Tahoe. And the important thing about this is our veterans group has gotten behind this. The town staff has been wonderful. The fire department, the police department, they've been out on the rescue boats. Yulaki kayaking is going to provide kayaks for them out there on the lake. So it is an event on Saturday. Mr. McLaughlin has got the street closed. We're going to have food trucks. So we're going to make it an event, just a Hope Mills event, but supporting that suicide awareness because we do have an awful lot of our military that, on a daily basis, commit suicide, and we just want to make sure that we let them know that we're supporting their cause. Now, next thing we have is our, we have no presentations. We have a public hearing, and it's case P 21-35, a text amendment to the Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance for the purpose of compliance with the newly adopted Chapter 160D state statutes, Town of Hope Mills. I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin.
Try to keep this brief. As many of you are aware, the state of North Carolina adopted the new 160D chapter of the state general statutes to consolidate current county and city enabling statutes for development regulations into a single unified chapter. Previously regulated under the chapters 153A and 160A, this new chapter places these statutes in a, to a more coherent and logical organization. While the new chapter or law does not make sweeping changes to policy in terms of the scope of authority granted to local governments, it does provide many clarifying amendments that need to be incorporated into the Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance. In terms of the requests, Chapter 160D regulations went into full effect on July 1, 2021, so bringing the Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance into compliance is paramount. The new law also requires municipalities to have up-to-date comprehensive land use plans by July of next year. I do have the recommendation from the planning board typed out for you guys. I'll pass it out now.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I'd like to upload the floor to any questions that you may have tied to the vote.
Anyone have any questions in reference to this?
Nope.
Don't have any questions. I can go ahead and make the motion if you want.
Public hearing, here?
Oh, the public?
Yes, anybody. I guess the thing now is, if there's anyone in our audience that has, would like to speak either in favor or against this, if you would come to the microphone and identify yourself with your name and address. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this proposal that is, basically, it's just updating them and making them cleaner to look at? I guess that's the best way to say it. But they are. You can go to our town website now, I think, and find them there. Are they?
Well, we're in the process. As is the next thing I was going to say, we're going to have to pretty much do a reprint because we have a brand-new ordinance.
Okay.
I think that's one way. It was a little challenging to get it in the packet.
Yeah.
It's the entire ordinance being rewritten, so we have to pretty much reprint all of them. But when that is happening, the track changes are actually incorporated, we'll actually have a PDF on the website.
Okay. So anyone here that would like to speak in favor or against? All righty then.
Motion to close.
Close public hearing. Now, Commissioner Bell Flowers, if you'd like to make the motion that has been prepared.
In case, thank you, Madam. In case P 21-35, the Town of Hope Mills Board of Commissioners votes to approve the text amendment, finding the request consistent with the 2030 Growth Vision Plan, while specific 2030 Growth Vision Plan policies do not address a comprehensive update to the Town of Hope Mills zoning ordinance, a current ordinance that is in compliance with the state statutes allows the department to continue to provide efficient and effective services to achieve goals laid out not only in the 2030 Growth Vision Plan, but all detailed land use plans for the Town of Hope Mills within the county. Approval of this text amendment is also reasonable and in the public interest, as is, as it is a comprehensive update to clarify standards and review processes for the public.
Have a motion. Do I have a second? Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you very much, sir. All right, next.
There's a lot of reading going on.
There's a lot of reading.
I think it was, what, 30 pages or so?
Oh, it's more than that.
A lot of changes.
Yeah.
And Madam Mayor?
Yeah, there's a lot of, a lot of.
I understand a lot of the changes with my construction background. It gave me the opportunity to, to see through some of this stuff that was, was happening and we weren't even aware of. So now hopefully, it's corrected.
Okay. All right, next, we have public comments, and at this time, we'd invite the people that have signed up to come to the microphone and speak. The first one we have is Jerel McGeechee.
Good afternoon again. Is it on? I'm going to just talk loud so y'all can hear me in case it's not on. So good afternoon again. Here with me is April, Ms. April, and Mr. Nathan. They're on the, our comedian as well. And so often, the mayor and your staff, you always, and the town manager, so often, you always come up and, you know, say, hey, good job, like you want to do for the kids. Good job for certificates. Good job for that. But also, it says, if you ask, and it shall be given unto you. Of course, that's the Bible. So with that being said, what, last meeting, I came up to you and I pleaded with you guys to come to our event. Every one of you said, I'll try my best. And some of you said, I'll be there. And you guys were actually there. We appreciate that. So we're going to show our appreciation and gratitude to you guys for attending our meeting. So what we're going to do, and so, Mayor, you asking, you know, hey, come up here and take a picture. We're going to ask you to come down here and take pictures. So our first person says, certificate of appreciation to Commissioner Jerry Legg in recognition of valuable contributions to the Hope Mills Prime Movers Family Fund Day, July 31, 2021. Same to Commissioner Marley. You come, come on down. Don't be afraid. Y'all get to get out your seat for a minute. Mayor Warner, Pat Mayor, Mayor Edwards.
Everybody just come on down.
Commissioner Bell Flowers, and our new town manager. We ain't forget about you, my man. Also, we have two more people that we want to come out. They're not here, but we want the representatives to come out. Sergeant Ali, if you would come up here and stand up here for the police department, and I don't want to say your title wrong, but if it's a little bad, if you come up, I'll be up in the front door. I don't want to call you by, but you know who you are, right? So if you would just stand up here and, and of course, we have Dr. McCray, although she's not here, and we have one for her as well, but we want to thank you all so much for participating.
Thank you.
And of course, we have Dr. McCray, although she's not here, and we have one for her as well, but we want to thank you all so much for participating. And of course, we have Dr. McCray, although she's not here, and we have one for her as well, but we want to thank you all so much for participating. So with that being said, thank you so much for that, and God bless you. Now you can have your seat. I have some more to talk about, but not that late. While you guys are going to your seat, I wanted to go ahead and speak on some, some other things real quick. As you guys spoke about the baseball team, that's really great, wonderful, and I really appreciate that. So I spoke with our Parks and Rec Director. I spoke with Dr. McCray, Mr. McLaughlin, and I haven't yet spoken with our comedian on a whole yet, but I do believe that once they come back with the win, hopefully they do, I do believe it's a good idea that we, as a town, could partner up. The Prime Movers, the town, the Parks and Rec, they've already agreed, to do some type of reception for them. Normally, when a major league team goes, wins a Super Bowl or whatever, they go to the White House. So in this instance, we want our kids, our youth, to come to the mayor's house, to their town. Come here at the Parks and Rec building somewhere and do some kind of reception. If the town could give, donate some money, we can go, you know, Papa John's or somewhere and just respond to them with a good manner, saying, hey, good job, and, you know, give something for cookies, ice cream, something. They're 12-year-olds, whatever they like. I think that would be a great idea that we, as a town, should do that. If they did something bad, I promise you, it would be all over the news. So if they're doing something good, I really think that you guys should consider doing something of that sort. I think maybe during the Labor Day timeframe, that'd give them time to get back, get back in school. After Labor Day, that'd probably be best. I don't know when, I don't know what, but I really think us, leadership as a town, should consider doing that. I'm going to keep saying it. I really, really think we should do that.
And to add to that, one time before, if we can get those that have digital signs, if they put that on the marquee when we get results, that way, when they do come in, because they're coming back by way of different vehicles because families took them, it'd be really neat for them to see, you know, congratulations or something, because I think that's important too. And then, of course, I agree, something special for them here at Town Hall.
Thank you so much. And the last thing, I know I got a minute left, so I'm not sure this issue has been arisen prior to me coming to Hope Mills, but I know we had Mr. McLaughlin taking photos, which was great. I think that the town maybe should consider, if they haven't in the past, maybe they should, maybe buy a nice camera, because when we give you guys your picture, your certificate, we got to take a picture. It'd be nice if the town had a really nice camera. I'm not saying a paid position, a volunteer person. Hey, I'm at most events. If y'all buy a camera, I'll take the pictures. I don't have a problem with that. So maybe you should guys should consider getting a camera or something of that sort. It can be left here at the Town Hall when we have events, ribbon cuttings or something of that sort. You know, we can take nice, good quality photos because we're moving forward. We got a digital sign. We got, we have new restaurants. We want to take nice quality photos. It'd be nice to have them and have someone to take them on a volunteer status as opposed to going out and hiring general photography. So that's another thing I think you guys should consider, just my two cents, but thank you for allowing me to speak. And we don't have anything as far as the Prime Movers coming up. I know Dr. McCray said, normally I speak, but we don't have anything coming up set in stone yet. We did a talk with Commissioner Marley and Commissioner Bell Flowers about upcoming food truck rodeo, but that isn't set in stone yet. We have a meeting on Thursday, and I'll give you guys the details about that at our next meeting. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you so much, and great job.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
In the past, when some of the teams have won the World Series, we've had the police department to meet up with the group at I-95 or if they're coming back altogether, and have a police escort through town to Broward Park, at which time, we have a gathering there to celebrate these kids. And I think we should welcome them home, win or lose. We should welcome them.
Yes, I agree.
Madam Mayor, I agree with, I agree with Commissioner Legg. I mean, these, these kids are a winner for going and playing in a World Series. They're already winners. They truly are. And they're ambassadors for us by representing our community at an event like this in Louisiana. So there's no question that we should have some type of event to recognize and honor them. And I would like to see that, that the town sponsor it, but also ask for one of our local businesses or our nonprofit businesses to get behind and sponsor this as well, because this is, we're one community, and you never know, like Commissioner Legg said, you never know when the next team's going to go to the World Series. Or, you know, so you recognize the teams as you, as they come through. So thank you, Mayor.
We haven't won it yet.
Well, just so you know, if you see me looking down, one of the coaches is, they've got it live, but I'm not, can't watch it, but they're going to text me scores as they get a score. So just know, I've, I've been, I said, we watched, I've watched on my phone and on, on the, my iPad, these games, and it's been so exciting. They're just, and these young ladies have just killed it. They're just doing great. Next, we have speaking is Edna Edmanson. Did I say that right? Adina, Adina. I'm sorry. Adina Edmanson. Okay, thank you.
My name is Adina Edmanson. I live at 3523 Buller Street and also on 3527 Buller Street on same property. As you know, from last meeting, one of my neighbors, she came up and told you that we have really, really bad crime on our street with drugs coming and going, day and night. It's not safe to live there anymore. I moved to Buller Street 27 years ago with my young son to be in a safe place. Today, I'm 70, and I'm not safe. I don't feel safe. My neighbors don't feel safe, and we just, it's crazy. And we also have a gentleman that lives on Praktika Street in a car, and I know he's homeless. I know he needs help. I used to be on a board of homeless shelter, and it's not easy to get on the, into the homeless shelter, you know, say, okay, you can go out there and just walk here. So there's no place for them to go, and I feel like Hope Mills maybe could consider something like that for those people to go there and maybe get some help. I'm, you know, I can give them help. I don't have much myself, so. But also, the gentleman across the street here has people coming and going, and it's always somebody different. I have grandchildren that can come and stay in my yard and play because I'm scared. Who knows what's going to happen next? They're going to start shooting. They start arguing over there. Who knows? There are people on the porch all the time, and so it's just, it's not home anymore. And I cannot afford to move. I can't sell the property. So I don't know what's the solution. I understand that Hope Mills does not have drug enforcement, but Sheriff's Department does. So we need to get somebody else involved to come and help us because we cannot live like that. Should I go to hotel? Well, I cannot afford none of it. I'm a single mom. My son is 48, and he's sick. I'm a single mom, my son is forty-eight, and he's sick, so...
I, I know that our town manager is, uh, taking good notes, and I know that we'll, uh, with, this is two separate meetings that we've had people concerned. Of course, we've had people call also, so, uh, they're, they're gonna work, they're working on it.
Something, well, I heard that. I mean, it's been ten years now.
Yeah.
And my, when I used to call nine-one-one, I was told I was maybe crazy. Or two, how do you know they're doing drugs? I mean, I don't know that, but if you have nineteen cars on the street?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Since she's here, and this has been the second meeting that she has spoke about this issue, is there an update from Scott? Would you like to update us on where we are?
Um, so the police department has taken possession to the location that has been reported. Do you have active ongoing investigations at this address? Obviously, I don't want to go personally and situation, but I know that there are several arrests, and we're gonna have to go to the location that's being talked about. But it, but it is a process. We do have to have charges, and it goes to the district attorney, and it's a process even. It's, I, I get that it's a concern, and we passed on those tips that citizens are willing to, to provide to the detention, uh, to the detective at the police office, and they follow up on these leads. So, that is helpful. Outside of that, I mean, obviously, I don't have authority and power to go to some address. And, um, with what they've done to assist any other neighbors, that's helpful. But again, it is a legal process where you have to have evidence, capture people doing crime, you have to cite them, arrest them, detain them, and they have hearings. So, that, that process is in, in play, it is underway, and I, I know for all people that are involved in crime, and you see someone gets arrested, and then they're out, right? They bail people out, um, and then they're set up for arraignments and hearing, and it, it, it's a process. You know, it feels discouraging to not see things happening in the community, but we, we do have a strong police force, we do have, you know, crime, everything involves crimes, and we do take that seriously and address those issues and try to resolve those issues in a different place. I, I totally understand what you're saying, and...
Why, you don't leave us, so... None of you leave, listed, it's, it's, uh, it's not fun. Well, if it was at your house, what would you do? What would you do if it was at your house, your neighborhood?
Understand.
Thank you. I did have another agenda, my time is up, obviously. I can probably go to City Hall and talk to someone about the other time.
Okay.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott.
Next, we have our consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that you would like moved to, uh, new business? If not, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next thing on our agenda would be new business, and this is a non-public hearing case number twenty-one dash oh-seven-nine, request for a site plan review. Hope Mills zoning ordinance, zoning C three, total acreage point seven-five plus or minus. Location is twenty-five seventy-one Hope Mills Road. Submitted by George Rose, engineer, on behalf of James McCarvey, owner. And I'll turn it over to Mr. McLaughlin. Twenty-five sixty-seven, okay. Okay, if y'all will change that on your sheet, because on our printed matter, it's got twenty-five seventy-one.
And this is what we got from the county to you.
So, you got...
I'll correct that, though.
You corrected.
But this is basically the address that we sent in the back, but, um... As stated, this is case twenty-one oh-seven-nine. This is tied to Wagon House Auto Repair. It's currently located at, um, along Hope Mills Road with vehicular access provided in two locations. With the approximately, approximately eighty feet of frontage and a hundred and four-point-eight feet of lot depth, the site is developed with an existing commercial structure, housing, and auto repair operation. The applicant is requesting to relocate the repair business. The, the new address will be twenty-five sixty-five, I think that's what twenty-five sixty-seven is.
Yeah.
The, uh, current address is what is printed in the advertisement, but the address that they're moving to is that new address. They're gonna consolidate that address with three vacant lots in the rear, in front of Wiggins Drive, and the total assembly will be zero-point-seven-five acres in size. The new development will also have eighty feet of frontage, but will be developed with a new commercial structure for the new auto, for new auto repair services. The new site will consist of a total of eighty, of eighteen parking spaces, and will have access off Hope Mills Road as well as Wiggins Drive in the rear. Staff recommendation is for, this is a image that provides you, uh, the location of the overall assemblies of the four lots. That small corner that's left out of Hope Mills Road, Hope Mills Road is the existing location of Wagon House. So, they're ultimately just moving to the, the site next door and to the rear. So, this is a copy of the proposed site plan. You'll see access off of Hope Mills Road and access off of Wiggins. Now, I don't know if there were any questions that you may have.
Anyone have questions in reference to this?
No, ma'am. I've been wondering when someone's gonna build on that property. If it's appropriate, I'll make a motion, but we have to have... Okay, gotta have public hearing? Non-public hearing, okay.
Yeah, it's not a public hearing, it's part of...
I'd like to make a motion if we approve case number twenty-one oh-seventy-nine, as indicated on the agenda.
I have a motion to approve case number twenty-one dash oh-seven-nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other from discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Thank you, sir. Yes?
No, I was just...
Okay, I was gonna say, it's, it's approved.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. The next item on our agenda is consideration acceptance of petition for annexation of the cash flow property in resolution number twenty-two-one dash seventeen, redirect, directing the clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the annexation petition. This will be annexation A twenty-two-one dash oh-two, and is a contiguous annexation. So, do you need, tell us anything?
Um, I think this is just the first step where directing the clerk, there's no real presentation, but one thing I wanna highlight is this is part of a new way of, of, we're approaching. Usually, when you see an annexation petition like this, starting is after we've had some very extensive conversations with the developer, so we know what this project is. We've met with them more than once. But what you see on item C is also tied to this, um, project, where we're gonna start asking for the request to, um, initiate, start the initial zoning process on the first time we start the annexation. That allows these to run concurrently, and that helps to smooth out this transition from developments coming in the town of Hope Mills. It's a system that we're kinda still developing as a planning routine, but it's seeming to work. And so, what'll happen is, when we have our public hearing, um, at the next month's hearing, that'll be the same time that this initial zoning, we go on the planning board, come right back to you guys the very next month. This is actually a subdivision, so I'm trying to get them to go ahead and submit to the county, so that the time the initial zoning comes in two months, the subdivision will come with it, so you'll have the annexation, the subdivision, and initial zoning all in, in about two months' time. And that way, it's completely under our jurisdiction. We have a hundred percent complete control, but we have, uh, had a test of meeting with, with this developer. It's in an area that, and I'll just go and say, public, is really booming, uh, right now. This is, um, off of Corporation Drive in Sand Hill.
Okay, so, is there any questions for Mr. McLaughlin? If not, do we have a, a motion?
I got a comment.
All right.
Madam Mayor. Uh, Chancellor, thanks, because when I looked at this packet on B and C, I know it's probably the first time that we're using them concurrently like this. First, the first time I've seen an annexation with the zoning that's, that's packaged up. And what I wanted to comment was, it's exactly what you just said. It's gonna really affect the time that, uh, for final approval. It's not only a win for the town, it's also a win for the business.
What we've noticed is that if we bring the developer in first...
Yes.
We sit them down...
On the front end, yeah.
Going through everything, stormwater, we're going through public works, going through fire, going through, um, all the different agencies. But if it lingers for four or five months, that's when things tend to happen. If we can go ahead and have a sketch plan, facilitate them submitting, and go ahead and get them in and approved, if they don't start construction for the next three or four months, that's up to them, but it's under our jurisdiction, so we have full control. So, this new approach, we're still kinda fine tuning, but it appears to be worth it.
I like the new approach, Madam Mayor, I, I do, because, because the four, the four or five months of a delay, that's where things happen. That's where problems happen. And we have, and that starts drifting on a backend piece.
And when those problems happen, and it's not ours yet, our ability to, you know...
Yeah.
Control things, or...
Yeah.
Well, and I, I think too, that, that what's important is, right now, materials and the cost of materials, steel, wood, everything has gone up, and it's also, there's delays in getting materials in. So, if we delay them, and then there's other delays, it could put this project all out of whack. So, uh, I do like this process, but I also like the fact that we're gonna, we're speeding them through. We're doing the right things, but we're trying to get them through so they, they can get the development going. Otherwise, you know, I, I did have someone tell me that ordering steel right now is six weeks out. So, you, you try to plan for that, and then you're trying to plan around all the other things you have to do, so...
And that's one thing I like to piggyback on. We're streamlining it to be quicker, but we're very meticulous throughout the process. So, it may come fast, but we still actually probably, um, put more, um, eyes on it than we have before.
The frontend piece, the quicker on the frontend. I'll go ahead and make a motion, Mayor, if you want.
All right.
Someone else is.
Okay, motion for...
A motion to approve resolution number R twenty-two-one dash seventeen, Sand Hill Road property directing the town clerk to investigate sufficiency.
Have a motion, have a sec, have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. We'll move to the next item, which is, uh, in the same vein as this one.
Same thing, that's the reaction for the R six designation.
Yeah.
Um, we've already, um, like I said, approved, or, uh, proven to the developers that that's the designation they wanna come in under. It's, uh, currently zone A one, so we couldn't actually zone it A one anyway, under our zoning, because that, that classification doesn't exist in Hope Mills. But like I said before, this is just formally starting that process, uh, from the county first thing.
But Madam Mayor, if no one has commented, I'll make a motion to approve that, speed it through.
All right, we have a motion to approve the initial zoning.
Second.
And, uh, have a second? Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Do I need to read, I need to read this, though, right?
No, this is just, uh, give you authorization.
Just wanna make sure, I don't need to read it.
All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All righty. Thank you. Next, we have the consideration of approval of a resolution of the acceptance of the ARP funds. And in your packet, you have a copy of the resolution. Uh, the town's, um, letter from Governor Cooper was, um, received on June fifteenth, and in that, it told us that the funds were coming, they would be in two payments, and we're accepting as our first payment. Uh, the estimated total grant is five million fifty-one thousand thirty-five dollars and seventy-nine cent. Uh, the first disbursement is two million five-hundred-twenty-five thousand five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and ninety cent, and this is the money for twenty-twenty-one. So, just need a motion to approve the resolution for us to accept this funding.
I'll make a motion. We, we approve the motion to accept this funding.
Okay, we approve resolution R twenty-two-one dash sixteen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Seeing none opposed. Next, we have a discussion regarding prohibiting large trucks on town neighborhood streets, such as Lakeview Road and Johnson Street, due to safety concerns and damage to roadways. And I will tell you, the reason why that I asked this to be put on here is that Lakeview Road is getting more and more dangerous because of the great, I call them eighteen-wheelers, but these are your huge trucks that are coming down the hill. And we've had the, several of the residents have contacted me because they're afraid two things. One, it's gonna get to the bottom of the hill and go right on in the lake, or, as fast as they're going, somebody's gonna pull out of, um, uh, Lake Shore, and you're gonna end up with somebody and being in a horrible accident. But on a regular basis, they're using it as a cut-through. The other thing, Johnson Street, it was amazing to see when the railroad tracks were shut down last week and the week before, the number of big trucks that would get there and have to back up and figure out how to get, uh, back on the main road, because they were trying to avoid the traffic or the light there, um, at, uh, Rockfish and Main Street. The question is that I have is, I know that I've seen them in other towns, I saw one today, where they put no, no, no trucks, no thoroughfare for trucks, or no neigh, no trucks, uh, on town streets. And we're talking about the, the huge trucks, not the, the ones that they're making lit deliveries to, um, the grocery stores, the Walmarts, I mean, they can get there without going down Lakeview. And most of them, when they come out of Walmart, uh, neighborhood Walmart, should be turning left and then left on one-sixty-two and coming back up that way. And then, in most cases, they would be turning right into the Walmart or whatever up there on Main Street. So, that's just my request, what we need to do in order to do that.
Madam Mayor, I thought we had a resolution that said no through trucks or no heavy trucks on residential streets. Somebody from the police department, what, what is our, our restrictions? I know we can't park in neighborhood, right?
Typically, the only restriction, um, that I'm aware of is that it's a restriction you can't park a truck longer than twenty-four feet on a residential street. I don't know if we have, um, regulations that prevent them driving. Um, I think that's what the mayor's talking about, just the heavy vehicle track. If you recall, uh, what we did with Hilltop when that gas station, uh, down the street was being done, and they were pushing back, um, on not wanting to bring Hilltop up to town standards. We closed the commercial traffic until they did. And it was because of the condition of Hilltop, but, um, in terms of the clarification of regulation, it's really tied to parking, um, trucks and those bigger vehicles on residential streets. We don't have regulations that I'm aware of that prevent them from driving on those neighborhood roads.
If we take a look at Dever Street and Applegate, it'll tell us what these heavy trucks, not even as big as these, are doing to our city streets. And that's, uh, I don't know how that, all those streets aren't ours, you know, that, the ones that are damaged, so I don't know how we're gonna address getting those fixed, but...
What, yes?
So, we have, um, the ability to put weight limits because they own a bridge.
Mm-hmm.
Um, personally, I'm not sure how large trucks make it off of Lakeview Road and Johnson Street, because it's hard to do that in a dignified, um, but we, we can pass a resolution and pass that on, and we can put up signage, um, those are our streets. We'll just, we need an indication that that's the intent. I know, um, the mayor and I have spoken about talking to DOT and, and changing your Google Maps with the, the Main Street. But if, if that's something that the council desires to do, definitely we can make that happen.
I, I, yeah, I believe that, I know that in, when we had, there was a one-lane bridge down there years and years ago, we didn't allow even school buses, and the reason being is, it was always the fear that that extra weight on the, the bridge the town owns, that there would be a problem. But I think the safety now, and these, the trucks go fast, and you're, you'll have to see how they manage to maneuver out of Trade, out of Lakeview onto Main Street, and oftentimes, they can't, so they go on across onto Trade Street, because they can't, they can't make that turn if there's cars there. So, I'm just thinking, if we stopped them on Lakeview, they can go on down, if they wanna stay on Legion, go on down to Cameron, or better yet, they should be going, they should be taking one-sixty-two, especially if they're trying to get back over up here to deliver something. And I think oftentimes, that's what they're doing, is easier to turn right out than it is to turn left to go, uh, back to sit one-sixty-two. Do we need a resolution brought back to us to approve?
It would be good to archive it that way. You could, you could go ahead and give me direction, and then people have, of course, the, the, the signature. But I think archiving, yeah, the, the store, the store documentation would be beneficial for down the road when they ask for it, we do this.
So, we just need a, um, a motion to ask the clerk and the attorney to draw us up a resolution? Would that be appropriate, or...
I'll make that motion, Madam Mayor. I kinda get tired of answering. I kind of get tired of answering questions, or trying to answer questions all the time. And I thought we already had something in place.
The weight restriction would be assigned as saying weight restricted. This would be a no through traffic, no truck traffic. But it's really difficult to make those terms and those movements. I'm surprised there hasn't been more issue with making those movements in those areas. But we can definitely do that. I think it would be wise to document it.
Yeah. Okay.
I think Ms. Albert had some.
Yeah, she's, yeah.
Yes.
I was just gonna say that it's been two or three years ago that this discussion came up, and we had some residents that came in and talked to us. And we discussed it, and we were going to have people look into it, but I don't think we ever did anything about it. I mean, it was just.
I think, I think the only thing that was ever done with the large trucks was saying you couldn't park them in the neighborhood. But as far as the rest of that wasn't covered, them actually, you know, using the Main Street. So we have a motion for a resolution to be brought back to the board at our next meeting. Yes, sir?
I'll second it, but I'd like to discuss it in just a minute.
Go ahead.
Is that the only areas of town, or do we need to look at other areas of the historic district? And I know, I know for me, my neighborhood, we're getting tractor-trailers coming down. Our neighborhood coming by the CVS and going down William Bill Luther, all the way down Ellison Street and cutting through to cut that, like you said, cut that traffic. Well, I've seen, I've seen several. But is that the only area of town, or do we need to address other roads as well?
I think probably wherever, wherever they're using as cut, as a way of cutting through because we're seeing that happen more and more. And I said, it was more obvious when the bridge was, when not the bridge, when the railroad tracks were closed because they didn't know they were closed until they got up there. And that's when you saw just the number of trucks. And you can't imagine what it's like for a truck coming down Johnson Street and trying to back up there in that curve. So Johnson Street, Lakeview, and I agree, Ellison is catching a lot of them too because you can cut it there at Main Street, cut through and come down Ellison and avoid Main Street. What they're doing is avoiding the traffic on Main Street.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir?
I think, and I agree with the motion, but I think when we look at, you know, drafting up a resolution, maybe we should first start with drafting up the policy. Because these two streets, Lakeview, Johnson, Ellison, they are not the only streets in Hope Mills that have cut throughs. They're not, they're clearly not.
Mayor.
Yeah, I think it's wise to turn to, to stand.
Yeah, let them tell us.
You know, having the restrictions on parking in residential areas is a good start because that keeps them out of the neighborhoods.
Yeah.
When you start chasing every street that has an issue, obviously local deliveries are gonna be something you can't. Moving trucks, there're gonna be some exclusions and reasons that large trucks have to get into areas. A lot of the residential roads from 10, 15 years past were not going to the standards that they expect and everything. So that's really more, the roads weren't built well. So it doesn't, it doesn't help to have heavy trucks, but it's probably more deterioration on the roads like Dever Circle due to the poor construction rather than just the trucks. But I think having, obviously, that's a major issue with just navigating through there with large trucks. So I think it would be wise to look at how the ordinance or something would impact the whole town so we're not just chasing street names.
Yeah.
Having public works that are signed up all over. Obviously, if there are areas that are more emphasized and problems, I can know of those three. I think it would be wise to implement ordinance and policy, but maybe to do some more research on that as a whole as well.
Use the, use the policy to, to, don't put it on particular streets, but use it to go to the streets that are needed as they arise. And we know we've identified three, so it might be more, but.
Well, yeah, yeah.
How do you have a more overarching policy and then decide what signs on certain streets?
That's where we start. And I would ask Commissioner Legg to amend his motion to take out the street names and go with the policy.
I will amend my motion to be, the ordinance should cover no big trucks on any city street other than for deliveries of moving people or.
If I could make a suggestion.
Yes, sir.
Perhaps what we should do is, without requiring a formal motion to do that, just direct staff and myself to come back with some suggestions of potential policies.
Okay.
So that we can fine tune the language of what we're able to do and what might fit. And when we bring it back to the board, then we can.
Okay.
You just made my job easy.
That's right, will you take back your second? Yeah, he removes his second. He's gonna, he's gonna change it to just come up with something, bring it back to us.
I'd like the town staff and the attorney to come up with a resolution to bring back to the board to address this truck situation.
And that's by consensus.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, next, we have our town manager's report. Is there anything you want to add to it, or are we good?
I don't have anything to add other than it's, it's still work with the team that we have here. Things are kind of getting, it takes a while to get up to speed. And I do understand concerns like we heard tonight. I would assure you, but it didn't appear to be here anymore, but I would assure that the police department is aware and actively taking all the effort they can. And I know it's difficult to not see immediate action, but there is a process. And I assure you that, I like it when, I get a lot of stuff coming at me as the city manager, but I, I don't have authority and ability in those things, and I try to pass those. Just like when someone you contact me, I go to the department head and I let the department do their job because that's how that should work. And please continue to do that. And I would urge citizens, it's okay to reach out and call, but that's usually what I do is I pass that along and don't personally take that action, but I have a great team that steps up the nail and do excellent work. It's a joy to be here.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir?
I got a comment and a question. And thanks, Scott. That's, while she was here, that's kind of why I asked you to weigh in. Because a lot of times, folks think that maybe something's not happening, or maybe it's not being addressed, or maybe it was overlooked. So, and they've been here several times. And I can only imagine if it was my house and my neighborhood, how I would feel if I was them. And I think we'd take that, all of us feel the same way. But my question is regarding the swim event on Saturday, what are the testing numbers from the lake water? And that's probably gonna go.
Done.
Yes, well, that's gonna do it.
Yeah, Beth is your first stormwater manager this year. I would say it's warm, it's raining this week, but I would say that, you know, we have passed along information about the center of the lake, like was asked for. And those numbers are a lot lower than what we've seen with perceived testing.
So we are actually, the testing around the lake will occur tomorrow. It's a 48-hour read, we have to take it to micro bag. We're talking about naturally occurring bacteria. So it's in every, it's in the ocean, it's in every lake. And what we are testing for is based off of if it's a water supply watershed, which our lake is not. So they're really arbitrary numbers. We're testing them to keep a baseline so that we know. But like Town Manager Mazzoros just said, during the summer months, we have warmer waters. The hotter it gets, the more bacteria grows. Water that is not moving, that is stagnant, becomes filled with bacteria. It comes from people's yard, it comes from businesses, it comes off of people from swimming in there. Sometimes it settles in the sediment. Once it settles, you walk through it, it stirs up the bacteria, and it doesn't really have anywhere to go. So there's been lots of mention of, have we cleaned it yet? There's, there's no way to clean it. That's the big message of stormwater. When it rains, it washes our town and it washes it in the waterways. So it's something we just have to live with. The reason that we are putting out the notices and putting up signage is really more or less for folks that have a weakened immune system or some underlying health issue.
Okay.
So I've been in the lake, my kids have been in the lake. We recommend, there's information on the website about what to do before and after going in any surface waters in any state for that matter. You should be washing off with antibacterial soap because we don't know what's in there.
Okay.
We're only testing for one type of bacteria, and like I said, it is naturally occurring. So we expect high numbers during the summer. We want the residents to be safe and any visitors that come into town. And quite honestly, I feel that, you know, you personally have to make that decision whether, you know, if you're sick, you can make the decision not to go in. If you know, you know your health better than the town staff does.
Right, right.
So we ask people to use caution and, you know, enjoy the lake. That's what is there.
And in the center of the lake, it's fast-moving, the stream is fast-moving. So I think that was what I was hearing from them was that they'll be swimming away from the swimming area, but it's also where the water continually is moving because it, we do have, well, we saw that when we didn't have a lake is the creek is there, and the creek is considered a fast-moving creek. So that's, that's another good thing if, if there has to be, you know, way in on whether or not they should swim.
So we actually, for two consecutive months, we had the fire department take us out and grab some samples along the line. I know that the lady that is coordinating the swim has been in contact with the deputy chief, and he took us out, we got some samples.
Okay.
Those numbers are extraordinarily low.
Oh, good, good.
So these folks that are doing these swims know that they need to clean themselves off when they get out of the water. So I think, I think everything's gonna be fine.
Okay, that, that was just a routine question, Scott, and thanks, Beth. You know, we've got this big swim event that's, that's coming in on Saturday, and I just wanted, just wanted to ask the question.
Yes, sir.
So I think.
The rain forecast that we have, it should wash it all out, or wash it all in, which is. I said, with the rain that we have forecast, we either wash it all out of the lake or wash it all in.
We're just gonna wash it all in and then all the way back out to, and we're right on both ends of that.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, of course, we have meetings coming up this week. There are reminders at the bottom of your agenda. The big thing, though, is that the swim meets, they'll start the first round at 9:00 a.m., and that will be at the lake, and a lot of activity's going on at the same time. And then our next meeting is Monday, August 16th. And you do know that we have three meetings this month because we're gonna meet on the end of the month rather than have the Labor Day week meeting. So there'll be, the last of the month, we'll have a meeting also. Any liaison updates? Anybody have a committee meeting that they'd like to give an update on?
No, ma'am, we do not have one yet. One coming up Wednesday.
Okay, anyone else?
We, the veteran affairs didn't have a meeting, but there's two members from the veteran affairs here, Jim Morrison and Greeley Mitchell. I don't know if they got any updates for the veterans. I know they, I know that committee's still been active somewhat since, but they haven't had a meeting.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, so I submitted to our representative a proclamation for suicide awareness month. September, of course, is suicide prevention awareness month. And, and we're still kind of watching the COVID to see if maybe there's some opportunities there. Right now, it doesn't look very good, but at least we have the proclamation for the town, and we'll provide some information on our Facebook site. And we're also, we're also gonna get numbers from the police and the, and the fire department so we can try to feed them on the 20th anniversary of 9/11. And those are the things that we got working on. And of course, we'll, at the next VFW meeting, we'll address Commissioner Bellflower's request on the first of November, or first of October.
Thank you, Jim.
And you know, that is old mill days. The first of October weekend is old mill days. So you might want to talk to Mr. Morrison and coordinate that because they do have activities planned. I'm not sure how, how much is planned, but they were moving a lot of the things we normally do 4th of July to that weekend.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you. Any other, any other information?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir?
I would like to see us address again the bus service for Hope Mills. We have a lot of veterans and elderly people. And I haven't had anybody say anything to me about it for a while, but I keep going back to my notes, and I keep seeing that. And I haven't brought it up recently.
That would be something we could maybe give an update at our next board meeting.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any staff comments? Glad to see Ms. Starling back. She had a nice, a nice break, but we glad to have you back. Anything from, any more from Scott or from Mr. Hartside?
We recently changed the policy. The policy is still in place, but we're a bit scheduling. It's more on one-on-one standard.
Okay, all righty.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn and go home, watch soccer.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?